Good evening. My name is Joan Reback. I'm with Neighbors Building a Better Altadena, and I want to thank you all for joining us this evening to the Ninth Annual NBBA Town Council Candidate Forum. And I want to thank you for caring about your town. First, I want to express sincere gratitude to a few people who have devoted tremendous time and energy to assuring that our town's elections happen and for this forum tonight, and to make sure that you have all the information that you need to make a good decision to vote on November 2nd or November the 6th. And we'll give you more information about where to vote and how to vote before the night is over. First and foremost, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, who has been involved with our Altadena Town Council since its inception, I believe. Catherine Gavsey? Oh, I should have asked her how to pronounce her last name. Anyway, Catherine, thank you for your capable team and for coordinating all of the candidates and the volunteers for tonight's forum. Eric Pierce, who has spent tremendous time creating a site for the town council election information and monitoring that site. Thank you very much, Eric. And I also want to thank Karen Gibson with NBBA for tremendous amount of time helping to organize tonight and all that she does for Altadena, and to Hugo Artiaga for his wonderful graphics for our flyer. As I'm sure most of you know, being unincorporated in Los Angeles County significantly minimizes our ability to have a voice in the issues that affect our community. Towards giving Altadena a voice, the Altadena Town Council was formed in 1975. Its statement of purpose, as it was set at its inception in 1975, has not changed. And it reads, "The purposes of the Altadena Town Council are: One, to act as an ombudsman for the neighborhoods of Altadena, conveying the needs and wishes of the residents to any county, state, or federal governmental body or agency; and two, to provide a forum for a town meeting in which to discuss issues of concern to the Altadena community. Each new election opens the doors for new ideas, new energy, and innovation. I encourage whomever becomes our new representatives to serve with passion. Get to know your constituents, listen to their stories and concerns, and truly strive to move our community in a direction that will serve current needs and set the foundations for moving into the future." With that, let us say our pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Altadena Town Council Candidate Forum. We thank our co-hosts, Neighbors Building a Better Altadena, the candidates, and those attending for your participation in this Zoom webinar. My name is Dorothy Keen, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters Pasadena Area, which includes Altadena as one of the San Gabriel Valley communities that we serve. The League's charter is to promote informed and involved participation in government through education and advocacy. We study and act on public policy issues, but never endorse or support candidates or parties. We assist in forums like this as part of our voter services program. Before we begin, I would like to introduce the rest of the League team. In addition to me, we have Hester Bell, who will be serving as timekeeper. Hester, would you show the paddles that you will be using this evening? These paddles, she will hold up for the candidates to let them know how much time they have to answer the questions. And also Valerie Jones is the question sorter. So we invite all attendees to submit questions in the Q&amp;A section, and I will be asking those questions of each of the candidates. So Valerie Jones, we appreciate her participation in this. And in the background and taking care of technical support as web host is Catherine Gavsey, and we are all volunteers. Pasadena Media will be broadcasting and recording this forum, and the video will be seen on the League of Women Voters Pasadena Area YouTube channel, found on our website. In the November election, there are 12 candidates competing for seats on the Altadena Town Council. 10 of those candidates are with us this evening. I will introduce the candidates by census tract and let you know who will or will not be here. So first of all, I would like to introduce Bill Stewart from tract 4601. And if all the candidates would unmute and have your video showing, we will be able to see all of the candidates. So Bill Stewart is a representative from 4601. The second candidate running for 4601 is Victoria Knapp, but she will not be with us this evening. And the tract 4603.01 has one candidate, and that is Dorothy Wong. Dorothy, if you would show your, take your video so we can see you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dorothy. And in 4603.02, we have Dr. Sandra Thomas. Welcome, Sandra. And in 4611, oh, sorry, 4610, we have Veronica Jones. Welcome, Veronica. And in 4611, we have Madeline Barber. Madeline? Hi, Madeline. And we have Pat Sutherland. Hi, Pat. And in 4612, we have Michael Davidson.
Hello.
Hi. And we have Reggie Wilkins. Reggie.
Good evening, folks.
And in 4613, we have Elizabeth O'Connor.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Elizabeth. And we have Michelle Stiltz Skoken.
Hey, everybody.
Hi. And we have Sylvia Vega, who will not be with us this evening. Now we will explain the rules of this forum, which have been agreed to by all of the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement about themselves and their candidacy. The candidates will give their opening and closing remarks by tract. Questions will be asked of all candidates. The candidates will be speaking in a stratified random order based on those tracts, track numbers drawn prior, and the names and track numbers were selected prior to this forum. The candidates know the order in which they will be giving their opening address. So when their time is up, Hester is going to hold up her trusty old paddle and let them know that they can stop at a particular time. So once a candidate's time is up, he or she should conclude their statement as quickly as possible. While candidates are being voted on by tract, questions will be asked of all candidates. Keep in mind that the elected town council decisions affect all families irrespective of the tract they live in. The attendee... I beg your pardon? I thought somebody said something to me, but perhaps not. The attendees are invited to write questions for the candidates in the Q&amp;A at the bottom of the computer screen. Just click on Q&amp;A, write your question, and press the return or enter key, and the question sorter will take your question and sort them for those that are similar and those that are different, and they will be submitting those questions to me, and I will be asking the questions. And just a couple of hints about the questions. The written questions must be in the form of a question and not a statement. If there are several questions of a similar issue, they may be grouped together by the question sorter. Questions must deal with the issues of this election. No personal references or attacks will be allowed. All candidates will have the opportunity to answer each question, and there won't be any rebuttals. A candidate also has the right to pass if they so wish. Again, each candidate will have one minute to answer the submitted questions and will be tracked by the timekeeper. And at an appropriate time, we will indicate that the questioning time is over. So we are going to start this evening then with the statement by each candidate, and I will call the candidates by name. So the first candidate from tract 4601 is Bill Stewart. Bill, we invite you to have your comments.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for participating here. This is my first time running for any sort of office. I'm one of those people who sit out there and complain a lot, but recently I've become semi-retired, which I think means I want my life to be a little better and enjoy it more. And I've decided maybe it's time to give back. My wife and I moved here a little over three years ago from the west side of Los Angeles, where we'd lived for 30 years, and were both shocked and surprised at the welcome we received. Walking our dogs here in the street, everyone was saying, "Good morning," and "How are you?" Hiking the trails, people were talking to each other and, you know, enjoying Altadena, as the license plates say, "Beautiful Altadena." Even in these past three years, we've started to see things erode. A lot of people are moving up here from the big city and wanting to enjoy it. And we're concerned, like I'm sure many people from Altadena are, as to changes that we're perceiving. I believe in government, but less government and maybe a better government. And in that case, I'd like to try and keep Altadena the way it's been for a long time. Keep the hiking trails open, keep people happy, keep people talking to each other, and try not to interfere in people's lives unless they have an issue and be there to help them deal with it. Thank you again for your consideration and hopefully your vote.
Thank you very much, Bill. Now, we would like to hear from Michelle Stiltz Skoken from tract 4613. Your opening speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Gavsey, Ms. Keen, League of Women Voters, Neighbors Building a Better Altadena for hosting this event. Thank you. I'm Michelle Stiltz Skoken, and I'm excited to be a candidate for census 4613. I'm originally from a small town in Kentucky, and my husband and I, Matt, moved into Altadena on Galberth Road 15 years ago. I was drawn to the charm of the homes and small-town feel of the area. My background is in the music business, where I worked on behalf of songwriters and publishers, making sure their interests were protected, the same as I will do for my neighbors and community. My career has revolved around client engagement, and I'm a successful relationship builder. This will benefit me as I work with my neighbors and my census tract, because many of them don't know that they're actually in Altadena when they have a Pasadena address. I've been a leader in my roles as a program and business manager. I've worked in special events for nonprofits like Caltech, the Paley Center for Media, and Chrysalis. I've managed budgets, and I've helped raise millions of dollars for organizations in Los Angeles. And now I want to put those skills to work in my own backyard. I volunteered locally with the Junior League and Union Station, and I'm a CASA, which is a court-appointed special advocate, working with LA County on behalf of at-risk children in the foster care system. I want to protect the interests of our community and make sure your needs and concerns are being addressed by county officials and local agencies. Thank you.
You're muted, Dorothy. You're muted. I'm reminding everyone to mute themselves as I'm trying to say it as muted. I modeled for you what I'm asking each of you to do. So if you are not speaking, please mute. All right. So the next person to give an opening comment is Elizabeth O'Connor from tract 4613. Elizabeth.
Thank you, League of Women Voters and Neighbors Building a Better Altadena for hosting and moderating this event. My name is Liz O'Connor. I'm a candidate for Altadena Town Council, representing census tract 4613. I moved to Altadena in 2003 and live on New York Drive on the very north edge of census tract 4613. So I have an Altadena address, but just barely. I'm originally from a small town in Massachusetts and was drawn to the neighborhood feel of Altadena. I think the remarkable diversity of our community and natural beauty of our neighborhoods make Altadena one of the best places to live in LA County. I have a graduate degree in public health from UCLA. For the last 22 years, I worked for a federal grants-funded international childhood cancer clinical trials group with headquarters in Monrovia. For the last 10 years of my 22 years, I served as chief operating officer. I've been spending the last few months transitioning my work responsibilities before taking on a new position. And with that time, I'm looking for ways to get more involved and be of service locally, and want to make those commitments my priority in the coming years. I want to understand the challenges our neighborhood faces and learn how I can work with LA County and the community to address them. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And from tract 4603.02, Dr. Sandra Thomas. Unmute, please.
I think I did. We'll see. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Thomas, and I've been in Altadena for 45 years, and I've devoted all 45 years to service the community. I enjoy community work. I enjoy the responsibilities of what you have to do as a community leader. I've served pretty much in most of our organizations in Altadena. My background is, my doctorate is in political science and education. I'm the CEO of the Quality of Life Center. I teach leadership development for the District of Pasadena. And by that, I mean all many students that have a GPA 3.5 and above. It's my responsibility to teach leadership development, to prepare them for college. So far, I've had 8,000, better than 8,500, local students to come through the program, and they've been very, very successful as they've gone on to their institutions of higher learning. I plan to end my census tract. I live in a census tract where people move, and you have new neighbors every few years. But that doesn't bother me. I love people. I enjoy being around people. And I plan to serve my constituents as best that I can in 4603.02. And I wanted to thank all of those who were responsible for putting on this forum this evening. I had a bunch of dental surgery, didn't think I was going to make it, but I'm here. And thank you for your time, and I don't have anybody running against me, but I still would appreciate it if you would just take time to vote for me. My name is Sandra Thomas, 4603.02. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandra. And from tract 4612, Michael Davidson.
Thank you. Everyone is telling everybody else where they live. I live on Boston Street. We have a great organization on our block. I'm running for office in 4612. I've been an Altadena resident for 30 years. We've raised our three children and three grandchildren here. And by profession, I'm a global consultant, working primarily in what we call the least developed countries, East and West Africa, Sub Asia, working to improve quality of life for smallholder agricultural growers and mitigating the environmental damages, the climate change, and other processes of call. And I'm here not to change the direction of the council at all. My concerns about safety, about providing access to services for seniors, increasing open space, these are all concerns of mine, and I'm in sync. Why I'm here is I think that it's right to give voice to some of the concerns of planetary sustainability, in particular, very specific things that we can do here. Very, very low-cost, very cost-effective tools that we have. Besides climate change, everybody knows climate change, but besides having to control for temperature and precipitation, those of us who work in this space also track eight other, what we call planetary processes. And some of those are near and dear to Altadena. And it's very important that we mitigate those so before they go into tipping points and cause systemic change in our environment, in our ecosystem. So I hope over the course of the debate tonight and further occasions where we can address the critical issues for us, I can talk specifically about some of these planetary processes and actually what we can do and where we can make an immediate impact. So I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the support of the great work of NBBA and the League of Women Voters. My name is Michael Davidson. I'm a PhD in public policy and would love to collaborate with all members of the council and, of course, Greater Altadena.
Thank you very much, Michael. And also from 4612, we have Reggie Wilkins. Reggie?
Hi. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, NBBA and League of Women Voters, for hosting this event. I'm not sure if I did this back in 2012 when I first ran. I'm just forgetting things. But I'm the incumbent right now, and I decided to run again. I love what Mr. Davidson is saying, so I wouldn't mind if I lost, to be quite honest, because it's pure duty to me. I mean, it's duty. I do it because I love Altadena, but I got no other ambitions. But when I first ran way back in 2012, my neighbors pretty much drafted me. And I wasn't interested, but the real reason they got me doing it is because James Baldwin came to UCSB like about 40 years ago, and he said, and as you know, he's a marvelous writer and poet. And I got his book. He signed this book, which is great. He says, "America really is the hope for the world because we're so diverse." He said, "If we can make it work in America, we have hope for the world." And no one ever said that before. I never heard anyone say that. And I look at Altadena, and I see Altadena as like a little America, you know? So I figure if we can make it work here, you know, by the transitive principle, America and the world could benefit. So that's what always makes me want to do it. You know, I do a lot of stuff. I have a couple of teenage kids, and I'm an astronomer, and I'm a poet, and I try to contribute all sorts of ways, and I'm kind of busy. But I love my council folks, and I decided I'd give it a run. But that doesn't say whether you should vote for me, you know? You know, do I represent my tract? Am I doing a good job? Do I represent Altadena? And how about California? Well, our tract is very diverse. We have up the street on Roosevelt, 11 Roosevelt. I've been there for 20 years. On one side of the street, there's a Trump Revenge flag, and the other side is a Black Lives Matter. And they had some tensions. I can actually speak to both of them, and I do. You know, I invite them to come to the corner and, you know, look at Jupiter and Saturn in my telescopes. So I try to build bridges, you know? I can speak to both of them. How about Altadena? Well, I shop at Altadena Hardware. I tell folks how great the local businesses are, and I support it. And I contribute on the blogs about beautiful Altadena. I got my bumper sticker and everything. California, the world, well, you know, we're nonpartisan here, but I encourage people to vote and think hard. I have a preference for one party, and everyone knows that. But I listen to people who have different views. I'm an economist, and I know. Thank you. So I thank you for your ability to participate tonight, and I look forward to serving. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Reginald. All right. And from tract 4611, Madeline Barber.
Hello there. Hello, everyone, and good evening to the League of Women Voters and Neighbors Building a Better Altadena. My name is Madeline Barber. I'm the incumbent candidate running for Altadena Town Council, census tract 4611. I'm a 26-year-long resident of Altadena and a Northwest Pasadena native. I graduated from Blair High School, and I have a Bachelor of Arts degree in Business Administration from the University of Laverne. But most importantly, I'm a mother and a grandmother. Heavily invested in my family and interested in Altadena's past, present, and future. I'm asking for your vote to continue working with co-council for census tract 4611. I will accept the responsibility to listen and possess the passion to be responsive to your needs and requests. Currently, I work as an operations specialist with a small group of affordable housing advocates. The job's mission is to house the unhoused. In this role, I work with activists and policy personnel with the front seat on how housing legislation is already impacting our neighborhoods in larger cities as well as our natural resources. I'm confident in my grassroots experience, such as hosting town halls and working with internal teams and mobilizers to host community hearings and attendance at press conferences to effectively bring this experience to the census tract 4611. I previously worked as a budget support analyst for a large food and beverage company for 17 years. And what was great about that position was during that time, I was able to hold a volunteer community liaison role, which was called the Adopt a School Program. We implemented various outreach programs benefiting local Los Angeles County schools, such as writing contests, NPOs, after-school tutoring, and other career-oriented events and activities. In the 2007, '08 school year, I was a member of the Pasadena High School PTSA Board. Beautiful chick. Am I done? Beautification chair and grant writer. As a member of Altadena Town Council, I intend to apply this knowledge and skill of grant writing to work with a diverse team of talent that comprises the Altadena Town Council to win funding for important enhancements.
All right. Thank you very much, Madeline.
Safety. Thank you for allowing me to do this.
You're welcome. I would just remind all of us to look at our timekeeper when she's holding her paddle up.
It goes really fast.
It does, doesn't it? I agree with you. And also from 4611, Pat Sutherland. Pat?
Good evening, everybody. I was a member of the Altadena Town Council from 2014 through 2020. And having been off the council for a year, I decided to run again. When I first joined the council seven years ago, I was certain that the work experience that I had all my life in sales, finance, and management would help me with the daily duties of a Altadena Town Council member. Well, I was right. And here are some examples of how my previous experience has helped me as a former council member. Communication. Communication in the business world goes both up to senior management and down to employees. In Altadena, it isn't difficult to take the information to Supervisor Barber through the appropriate person in her office. It's much harder to get information out to residents. I've used Nextdoor to pass information to this census tract. It's not ideal, but it does work. And I do look forward to learning what the new Altadena... And I do look forward to learning what the new Altadena Town Council Communication Committee is uh, working on. As a banker, I've put together many client requests for residential real estate loan uh, loans or line of credit for their business. Everything needed to be researched and analyzed before presenting their request to an underwriter for final approval. Here in Altadena, I've worked on numerous land use requests, which include due diligence and analysis so that regional planning can make a well-researched decision. Coordinating with others. Uh, a bank manager or retail store manager, both of which I have been while leading their unit, must coordinate with many areas of a corporation. In Altadena, projects often require working with many divisions of Los Angeles County. As a member of the Film Committee, in response to multiple complaints from residents, we held town halls with um, Film LA and many county areas. We ultimately put together questions and answers that explain the film process in Altadena with contact information and published it on the ATC website. Uh, actually, we then had to update the Q and A's because we found that certain areas of the county disagreed on the process. Thank you very much for listening.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and uh, from track four, six, oh, three dot oh one, Dorothy Wong.
Thank you very much. You can call me Dot. Um, my name is, my name is Dorothy Wong and uh, I have been uh, the representative for Census Track forty six oh three point oh one. Uh, and I would be honored to represent this census tract for two more years for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three term. That will be twenty years, uh, my anniversary of living here in Altadena. So serving uh, on the town council, I have learned a lot. My background is actually in television production, live multicamera. My gift is multitasking on the go. Um, serving on the town council, I have learned a lot. And I've realized that our resilience comes from working together with our neighbors, respecting, listening and learning from each other, including the generations of families born and raised over decades, as well as addressing concerns of our newer residents while prioritizing our most vulnerable. Our diversity, as you've heard, is our strength. Our multicultural, intergenerational diversity is our gift. Together, partnering uh, with organizations, sharing, engaging. Uh, again, coming from production, my specialty is putting on events. Uh, so during COVID, uh, I helped the Altadena Farmers Market go drive-through with my production skills. And then uh, through uh, strong um, awareness of social justice, uh, helped put on a variety of events, including Peace in the Park, uh, Dina at Charles White Park, and we'll be doing another event in November. Uh, Activate Peace in the Park at Loma Alta Park. So my background now is I work in uh, traffic safety and mobility. I teach bicycling and pedestrian safety for all ages and abilities. I've just gone through the California uh, AARP Fellowship uh, for walkability. Uh, so I'm super excited to see what we can do there and uh, I will share more during Q and A.
Good, great. I'm glad you mentioned Q about Q and A because I'm going to ask our viewers to use the Q and A for your questions, not the chat room, please. All right, and uh, our next uh, tract is four, six, ten, and we'd like to hear from Veronica Jones.
Good evening. I'm Veronica Jones. I represent uh, Census Track forty six, ten for two terms now. I've been in Altadena for years. I live at my present home for thirty-nine years here in Altadena. So I um, love Altadena and this is my home. I have served two terms on the Town Council. It it has been exciting and I've learned a lot. I've, we've had our ups and downs. And most of all, what I've learned is when you learn to work with the residents, our local organizations, the Board of Supervisors and my colleagues on the Town Council, you can get things done. You can make improvements here in our community. And so it um, it's a honor and a privilege to represent the Census Track and to be able to work with all those different organizations and people. If I'm elected, I will continue to work hard for my Census Track to make it safer, greener and cleaner. And I want to thank NBBA for doing this every year and the League of Women Voters. Um, participated um, two times before. And just a little story, the first time I canceled my tickets for Hamilton to be at this forum. And I, I really was upset, but it worked out that it was better that I be here and um, start being serious about what I was planning to do. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Veronica. All right, and uh, we had uh, four uh, questions submitted by the Neighbors Building a Better uh, Altadena. And we're going to start with those uh, four questions. And the first question I'm going to ask of um, uh, Bill Stewart. And the question is, why are you running for Altadena Town Council? And what skills and strengths would you bring to the council?
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, I'm running, as I said earlier, because I want to give back. I've been one of those people that have complained about my government on a national level for for years and years now, but really did nothing but vote when I had to. And starting on a smaller basis here in Altadena, I'd like to start directing what goes on in my community. I was a, I was, I still am, a a successful businessman, a film, film and television producer. And with that, I would uh, be in charge of uh, large groups of people. When I worked with the studios, I was heading up uh, divisions that had five, six, ten thousand people. And the object there is to get things done. You you don't have success without accomplishment. And I think what I would like to bring to the council is uh, less discussion and more action. I know that politics tend to drag things down to the lowest common denominator. But I think we all care about Altadena. And that's my focus, to keep Altadena beautiful and to make it better if we can.
Thank you very much, Bill. And I will remind uh, all of the candidates that uh, you have one minute for it, uh, the answer to the questions. And I'm going to ask the same question of each candidate, and that is, I'll ask Michelle. Why are you running for the Altadena Town Council and what skills and strengths would you bring to the council?
Thank you. I'm running for Altadena Town Council because I felt called to serve and give back to my community. I want to see Altadena be the best town it can be for everyone who lives here. I will bring a new enthusiasm and creative ideas to the council. I will be an effective community liaison. This is supported by my background in relationship building, client support, meeting the needs of others and collaborating in team environments. I've been successful at building trusted relationships due to my approachable personality, caring nature and dependability. I have led and worked collaboratively on many committees, working toward a common goal for organizations like Chrysalis, Paley Center, BMI and the Junior League of Pasadena. Also, I've been an effective advocate in my role as a CASA, which is Court Appointed Special Advocate, working in partnership with LA County Departments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the same question, why are you running for the uh, council and what skills and strengths would you bring to the council? Elizabeth?
Thank you. Uh, I'm running because I want to be of service to the community. That has been my home for nearly twenty years. As I mentioned in my introductory statement, for the last twenty-plus years, I've worked for a federal grants-funded clinical trials group, the last ten years of which I was leading as Chief Operating Officer. The job provided me with several translatable skills, I think, will serve the town council. Those include grant writing and management, budget development and management. I manage an annual budget of fifty million dollars. Understanding regulations and bureaucracy so that important work can get accomplished. Working with government agencies to advocate for stakeholder resources, oversight of IT modernization projects, event and meeting planning. I've always been interested in understanding how things operate and pride myself on being an effective problem solver. I'm known for my reliability to get work done. I love being part of a dedicated team made up of individuals that bring complementary skills and new and different perspectives. I hope to bring that curiosity and commitment to the Altadena Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And Dr. Sandra Thomas. Why are you running for the uh, town council and what skills and strengths do you bring to the council? Unmute, please. You got it.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Um, well, I feel like I've been on the council a little while. And and I say that, I think, many, many, many years. So I've learned what the town council represents. Um, uh, Catherine uh, Barker, our supervisor, depends on the town council to try to help get things done in Altadena. We're supposed to be the boots on the ground that know what's going on, that know what our community needs. Uh, I found out that when you see something in Altadena that needs to be done, and if you want to get it done, you have to be the person that can take the lead, that can go and make sure that LA County knows what we need and and that they are aware and they, and we will have to make, try to make the decisions as to how we get things. Now, I found out that we do not have a thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy. You'll have another chance, I'm sure. Yeah. Uh, and uh, the same question to Michael Davidson.
Don't start the clock yet.
Okay.
Okay. Um, why am I running? Uh, for a lot of reasons. Let me just say that Altadena is a created, diverse and wise community that's committed to improving quality of life for all its residents. And for me, that's a recipe for all that is possible and a great probability of success. So I like, I mean, I'm excited about it. That's one reason why I'm running. A specific skill, very specific skill that I have that I've employed for a lot of years is addressing community problems. We generally identify a problem. I'll try and do this real quick. We identify a problem and then the next thing we do is a needs assessment. Everybody knows about needs assessments. What we've found out is that there's other ways of attacking a problem. Very quickly, needs assessment tend to focus and emphasize what we don't do well. And if we frame things in a negative, in a negative framework. So another method called asset, A S S E T, based community development, A B C D. That is a different way of framing. You start the same problem. You can have type two diabetes. You can have unemployment, whatever the problem may be. But what you do to the community in the community, you identify the talents and the skills that reside in the community and then you draw those out and you frame the entire adventure in a positive light. It's not, this is not.
Thank you, Michael. We got it.
Okay, good.
All right, and Reggie, Reggie Wilkins. Why are you running for the council? What do you bring to it?
So I've decided to run again because I think uh, my love of Altadena. And again, like I said, my commitment to making Altadena a a role model for America even, I think it's just to fulfill that vision that Baldwin stuck in my head that I'll die with. We really can make the world better if we make it better here at home. Um, and that's very vague and idealistic. I mean, what does that really mean? You know? You have to respect people. You have to respect our history. You have to respect our differences. You have to be able to listen. All these things you learn in the council. It's painful. Some people don't last very long in the council. But I I've managed to live, so my skills, I'm economist, PhD economist, so I while I'm, while I'm very uh, idealistic, I'm also someone who studies numbers and costs and benefits. So you have a left brain, right brain thing. Things aren't free, you know, someone's paying. So the dream has a price, right? And so as economists, I balance these sides of my body. So that's it. I'd like to serve again. Like I said, Mr. Davidson has a wonderful resume, so I will not be dissipated if I can spend all my time doing astronomy. But if you elect me, I will serve.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, and uh, and Madeline Barber.
Thank you. Well, I think the obvious love for the town, which goes without saying, I think we have that in common, all of us. Um, this beautiful foothill community has a lot to offer and it also has a lot of opportunity for growth. I want to do my part to ensure inclusionary zoning is included in planning to avoid displacement of families and neighborhoods. And also uh, adaptive reuse is really important to me in places where there is potential. We should consider adaptive reuse um, instead of total demolition of buildings um, to uh, just protect this small town uh, vibe that we have in Altadena. And um, lastly, I'd I'd love to see more viable businesses in Altadena to prevent us off from traveling to nearby cities for necessities and amenities.
All right, very much. Uh, Pat Sutherland.
Thank you. Um, let's see if I can be brief this time or more brief this time. Um, frankly, um, I decided to run again this term because I really missed the work that I was doing on the council. I missed the people that I was working with, whether they were uh, other council members or members of the community. Um, I graduated from University of Santa Clara with a business degree, uh, majoring in accounting. And then had two careers, one in the retail business and one in the banking and financial industry. Um, in all cases, as managers of um, of branches or um, as um, lost track, lost my track when I looked up your little sign. Sorry about that. Um, and um, I think I spoke earlier about how my experience in uh, during my working life helped me with the work that I was doing in the community. So before you raise the sign again, I will say thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And Dot, why are you running uh, for the town council and what skills and strengths do you bring?
Thank you very much. Uh, so I have finished two terms and have learned a lot uh, as how how government works, obviously the county. And uh, honestly, looking at federal and state legislation that can support our community as it reaches the county. Uh, I think I've learned that over the past few years. And then um, as a community educator, my strength as an educator and organizer in mobility justice, social justice, and the work I've seen uh, working with cities, uh, safe routes to schools to me is a huge uh, asset that could come to Altadena and help improve traffic safety and public health. So I'm not, I'm I'm a determined woman and um, I don't want to quit yet and establishing trust in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Veronica Jones.
Okay, hi. I am running again because I believe that if there's a job to be done, then I need to be out there helping do it, not just asking someone else to do it. So there's a job to be done in my uh, census tract and I'm out here doing it and I want to keep on doing it. I have a lot of experience working with the community on issues such such as public safety, public public infrastructure improvements, community police relations, economic development and, okay, and reinvigorating relationships with local, state and federal government. I see myself as a positive advocate for change in my community. My strength is listening and doing the work.
Thank you very much, Veronica. All right, uh, and so now we have another question. Uh, and it is uh, how do you plan to reach out to and involve residents of your census tract? And I'd like to ask Michelle to answer that first. Michelle still scoken, yes?
I'm here. Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted. Um, first off, I'm gonna go door to door and meet and engage all of my neighbors. Um, leave flyers or information if they're not there. I touched on, a lot of people don't know that they're in Altadena. I touched on that earlier. I will create a contact list um, and send monthly email blasts. I want to get to know them, what they do for work, their hobbies, their volunteer activities. Because if we get to know them better and their interests, we can um, put them um, see where they might be a good fit to work with the community um, with their knowledge and interests. And it can be easier um, to, easier for them to know how to volunteer. Um, of course, I'll Of course, I'll do the things like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram pages. I'll do Zoom monthly meetings next door to all the areas in my tract. Let everyone know if they don't about the Altadena Town Council website and other groups like Beautiful Altadena and MBBA.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Elizabeth O'Connor. How do you plan to reach out and involve residents of your census tract?
Yeah, given the broad range of generations in our community, I would employ a variety of strategies to engage and build trusting relationships. In addition to being available by phone and email, I would use social media and in-person conversations. I've come to value my nearly daily walks through the neighborhood, and would try to leverage those more as opportunities to connect one-on-one, and then also really reach out to people and houses where I don't, I don't run into people on the street. I would also consider using Zoom meetings and online survey tools like Survey Monkey to gather input on important issues. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And Dr. Sandra Thomas. It's that old unmute button that gets you every time, doesn't it?
Oh, my God, and now I'm, I can't, I'm not even on the thing.
No, you're fine.
I don't, I don't, I don't see me. Just go ahead and come back to me. I'll find my way.
Well, we don't need to see you. We can hear you. We see.
We can see you.
Oh, okay. Tell me which question it is again. What would I do?
Why do you plan to reach out to and involve residents of your census tract, Sandra?
Well, I plan to, you know, as I said, we have different neighbors coming and going all the time in my, I live on Calaveras. And wonderful, wonderful, wonderful area. But everybody comes and moves and then, and kind of moves on. I plan to engage my my community, I'll call it, my census tract, by just trying to keep them informed of what's going on, just trying to be the person that makes sure. What I have found out is that the census tract people will find you. If there is a problem that you don't know about, they will certainly let you know. And they will let you know what they want you to do about it. So I found out it's best to listen, try to solve all of the problems that you can, be a good neighbor, and try to make sure that you're doing the best that you can to take care of your constituents in your census tract.
All right, thank you very much. And Michael Davidson.
I think that we all have a lot of tools that we can use. We have social media tools without end. On our block, we have an email group. Anyone's going out of town, we're notified. Everybody notifies each other. What I want to do is first, and the pandemic is a bit of a barrier, but I'm gonna walk the census tract. And what I want to know is what people want to know. So I want to tell them who I am and where I am and et cetera. But I want to ask them what their concerns are, and the tracks are relatively small. So I really want to do that door-to-door with a mask on six feet away. But, and hopefully, the opportunity comes that we can put groups together. That would be ideal. Short of that, I don't think there's any social media tool that's better than knocking on a door, and that's what I intend to do.
All right, thank you very much. And Reggie Wilkins.
Like Michael said, we have a pretty good list here, the president's list, and I've been on there since we moved here in 2000. And you get to hear everything from coyotes to, you know, people you don't recognize in the street and the fireworks. And so you can sort of get your thumb on the pulse. I like to go to the street corner and basically talk to neighbors as I share my telescope and astronomy with folks around the area, so I get feedback while I'm doing positive stuff. I also work for a company, I won't mention its name, but if certain problems are happening with one's electricity bill, I can let people in very high places know about that. If service is not great, I have ways of making that happen. So on the ground, like Michael says, as well as the media, you know, I think I do a pretty good job. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. And Madeline Barber.
Hi there. Thank you for the question. I think that can be accomplished in so many ways, but I'd really like to have some fun with it as well. Definitely walking. I've come to realize just even from taking walks leisurely that it's a different vibe, it's a different community. It's such an opportunity to talk to people just as you're, as you're walking. Also, I would like to, I'm working on an ancillary, I'm sorry, Altadena Town Council Program Communications Team, basically, that will kind of reduce redundancy in messaging and really have activities geared towards engagement. So I'm looking forward to that. And again, like I said, just having some fun. Maybe the food trucks on Lake is awesome. I'd love to see that become like a street fair so the community can get together. But yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Pat Sutherland.
Yes, I've used Nextdoor in the past, and I will continue to do so. The Nextdoor Neighborhood Central Altadena covers most of our census tract. But then I would also have a... Is my picture wet? Okay. I would, I would also have a separate email list for those people that do not... I'm sorry, I'm making myself crazy because I can't restart the video at any rate. I'd also like to reach out to the neighborhood watch groups. There's three of them in our census tract to make some additional, start some additional lists there. And I think that's it for the moment. If I can restart the video, I will. Otherwise, thank you.
Well, is it, you mean it's your, the camera, the...
Yeah, the camera just went.
Oh, it disappeared and...
With a big sign, unable to start the video. So let's try to get it started again.
Oh, but we can hear you well.
Yes, right. I could see that. Yes, that's why I kept kind of talking.
Hi, this is, this is your host. I saw that happen, and I put your video back on. And we have somebody who was, I guess, helping Dr. Thomas. And he showed up on her video, so I took that off so we're not confused. So you should be back.
Well, not yet, but go ahead. At least you've got my voice.
Well, I've sent you a message saying, I asked you to start video. You have to do it yourself. Click on the message. Sorry about this, guys.
That's all right.
Now, not all of us are used to doing these things.
Okay.
Yeah. Panelist, am I talking to right now?
You're, you're, you're talking to Pat Sutherland is the one who needs it, but...
Oh, okay. There we go. I'm gonna, I'll do it again. Pat, you would receive, you'll receive something to click on that asks you to start your video. I can't.
There you go. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, and whoever is trying to help Dr. Thomas with her cam, oh, there, you're back.
He's back too. Everyone's back. We're delighted.
Okay.
All right, and so now, how do you plan to reach out and involve residents of your census tract, Dot?
Thank you. So within Census Tract 460301, we have a good listserv as well, Facebook page. We also do some Instagram work on my page, social media. But really, community resilience is vital right now. And so capacity building will be the next order of business. Again, a variety of events, again, reaching schools, churches. Our Hispanic, Spanish-speaking population, I often find is missing from the conversation here. And we have to help, help represent those that don't speak English necessarily, and as well those most vulnerable that can't get out of their house any longer. So it is a variety of communications. And the last thing is committees. Town council committees involving the community and empowering the community is a great way to reach our residents, and lots of information webinars.
All right, thank you very much, Dot. And Veronica Jones.
Okay, hi. I want to just piggyback on a little bit of what Dot said about our Spanish-speaking community. I walk and I handed out a flyer, and my back of my flyer is in Spanish. The guy I handed it to was, he spoke perfectly good English. I didn't know he was Mexican, and he said, you know what, I will vote for you just because you put it in Spanish. Because they are sometimes left out. So I love to host community town halls and coffee chats and tell stories about what's, what's going on in our community. The most, when I host, usually I get 75 to 100 people. I also walk my census tract handing out information of what's going on. I'm involved with the neighborhood watches in our community and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And Bill Stewart.
Hi. You know, I looked at the question when it was sent to me, and I'm gonna be a bit of a contrarian here. Having lived here and enjoyed the place, I feel that it's more my job to respond to the communities. Dr. Thomas said, when there's a problem, you're gonna hear about it. I think it's the council's job to be ahead of these problems, not to knock on people's door and ask them what's wrong. Because then you're gonna get 100,000 different answers, or in my case, I don't know, 6,000 answers. I'd like to see us be more active rather than reactive. I'll let people know where I am, how they can reach me, what I do. And besides that, I'm gonna work to protect all these people, make their lives better, clean up the trash, do those little things that make us feel better about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now it's the third question. And we're going to ask Elizabeth O'Connor to answer it, and the question is, what do you think are the top issues facing Altadena, and how would you address them? Elizabeth?
Thank you. I think the top issues facing Altadena are common across most of California. Affordable housing, climate change, homelessness. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to address all of them in a minute, but Altadena is considered a more affordable community than much of metro Los Angeles. And more recent, small business development has been instrumental in increasing its appeal and contributing to increased house values. While all that's positive, I think there is risk that Altadena may lose some of its character and diversity of housing prices, limit new residents coming into our community to those with a higher socioeconomic status, ensuring that we allow space for more affordable housing, which is important to balancing out our growing popularity and maintaining our identity. Then climate change, it's a global concern, but we have a responsibility as a community to act locally in support of the environment. That means ensuring we set positive examples by making the most of opportunities for Altadena facilities to be green. We should also continue to educate our community about best practices for improving their homes, environmental impact, and ways to keep their property safe from severe weather and fire danger. And then homelessness, we have a lot of... Thanks.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And Dr. Thomas. What do you think are the top issues facing Altadena, and how would you address them? Unmute, unmute, Sandra.
I guess she's going to have to tell me every time. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Two of the top issues that I see facing Altadena are not uncommon in any community at large or small. One has been addressed, and that's homelessness. And the other is housing. Well, they can tie them one into the other. I'm, our supervisor, Supervisor Barker, is working on the homeless problem is one that we all see. It's in Altadena. If you're anywhere in Altadena, you see homeless people. You see people needing help. I, my heart goes out to those in need of homes. My heart goes out to what we can do about that. Now, there are a lot of things going on to address the problem, but as long as it's a problem, then it's still a problem. And I know that that's one of the things that's at the top of Supervisor Barker's list. And we're just hoping that she will be able to help us in Altadena deal with those problems.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Davidson.
You know, when you look at the social and economic metrics and how Altadena stacks up in the county and at large, Altadena is, as we know, is a wonderful place to live, and that's indicated in a lot of socioeconomic metrics. The one thing that stands out, and I don't have an easy solution to this, is a lack of open space. Open space is an important aspect to high quality of life. And I have some ideas, but I think we need to have a discussion about how we can capture some more open space. And the other thing is, I do not know why we allow people to go 60 and 70 miles now on Altadena Drive. That is a killer. I walk every day, and I walk all around the golf course and up around the reservoir. I cannot cross Holliston where it meets Altadena Drive for the life of me. So, and it goes to safety in general, especially around schools, but those are two things that I think stand out. And then in terms of community landscapes, I have a lot to say on that, hopefully at another occasion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Reggie.
You know, it's interesting because if you have a house here in these Altadena, there's, you know, people want to buy you right out, you know, as is. So it really is based on, I think, socioeconomic status right now, how you're doing. If you lost your job because of the pandemic, things are horrible right now, you know, when the government can't afford to give you tax breaks anymore. What jobs are gonna be back? So this is a tough one, you know, and it's not just Altadena, it's America. You know, so what can a rep from 4612 do about that? You know, those are huge issues. I think those are, you know, they're strictly economic, and I'd lie if I had a house, if I said I have a solution to that. But I agree that the traffic is crazy, the speed is insane. My son does a lot of walking, and I fear he's gonna get run over. So that's a big issue, but it really depends on east side or west side, right? Like here, we're doing wealthy, we're doing well. If you lost your job, you know, you're a cook or something, it's not very well. So how you fix that? Fix COVID? You know, get vaccinated, I guess. So, yeah, that's a tough one. Thanks.
Thanks, Reggie. Madeline.
Well, I actually mimic everything that everyone has said. I think the biggest threat that we have across America is definitely our unhoused community.
Oh, you muted. You muted by mistake.
Oh, okay, because I didn't do that. I was saying that I believe also that our unhoused community is a big threat to Altadena as well as across the country. I happen to work in Hollywood, and the homelessness there is epic. It's just out of control. And of course, with COVID and people losing their homes and their jobs, and I just believe that we really have to have some type of fundamental plan for people to be able to link them to services and have a way out in Altadena. It's definitely something that we have to put a little more heart and soul to. And also safety. Yeah, we have a lot of speeding. I think we need some more stop signs. Definitely, we need to look out for our neighbors.
Thank you, Madeline. We gave you a couple of seconds more because of the problem. Pat, Pat Sutherland.
Well, I think I don't have anything really to add to what everybody has said. The only thing that hasn't been mentioned is something that possibly is, will be taken care of within the next couple of years anyway, and that's the whole leaf blower issue that we've been hearing a lot about in Altadena. What I would like to know is, are there procedures for implementing the process, and can we be of a help? I don't know about that. But hopefully, we will get some guidance from the county as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Dot.
Thank you. So the top issues facing Altadena are a few, but I have to answer them in one minute. So I think our potential, our issues are our potential. So I think Altadena really assessing how we line up with the county's general plan elements, that is, climate action, housing, mobility, our public health, safety, and then the sustainability. That is climate action, housing, mobility, uh our public health, safety, and then the sustainability plan. Um that would be a really great uh step for us to really address that. And then as it relates to traffic safety and mobility, uh which is the heart of the matter for me. Yesterday, Altadena has a higher pedestrian collision rate than Pasadena and three hundred percent higher. Than our neighboring communities. Yesterday, a bicyclist was hit, struck by a vehicle or the bicyclist struck the vehicle. And a pedestrian trying to cross Bar Oaks and Altadena Drive where we don't have connected sidewalks uh was transported away in an ambulance. And after talking with Highway Patrol, they said it was the bicyclist's fault and it was the pedestrian's fault. But what's wrong with our streets is they're designed for fast-moving vehicles and not for people. So that's what I would love to see change. Thank you.
Very much, yes. Veronica, Veronica Jones?
Hi again. Okay, I see the top issues in Altadena, at least two of them. One is affordable housing. My children can't afford to come here and live in my house. And they're professionals with um decent paying paying jobs. And I'd like to have my grandchildren close to me, but they can't come here. They and you know, they can't afford to to buy a home here. Another thing I think is a problem is business development. We don't have enough businesses here in Altadena and we spend most of our money outside of Altadena. If there was a way to bring businesses so that we could keep some of our money and our tax dollars within our community. I think we could solve a lot of our problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Bill Stewart?
Yes, I'm gonna I'm gonna piggyback on a lot of what's said already. I think uh Mr. Davidson with the. With the speeding and that, uh we came from a neighborhood, well, we came from Beverly Hills. Uh and every time I go back there, I get scared because people don't even stop at red lights anymore. Uh here, we have the opportunity, especially as you said, on Altadena Drive, maybe to control traffic a little more. I think that would be a critical function of our government and something we locally can do. I don't know if we can solve the problem of affordable housing or homelessness up here, but certainly give it a shot. I think open spaces, having the trails open and uh having people being able to walk uh up the hills. To get away from the traffic and all that. And then I'll go back to what uh Ms. Jones said. Uh I think Altadena is primed to have more businesses, uh restaurants, uh things of that nature. When I drive over to, I think it's Sierra Madre and all there, they have nice little streets with restaurants where people come from far away. To 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 enjoy. And I think I'd like Altadena to be one of those magnet uh little uh towns, little villages. Where people say, hey, let's go there for lunch.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Bill. And Michelle?
Thank you. I agree with all the stuff that's been said, but I'm gonna start with number one, safety. Um ensure the sheriff's station remains in Altadena and is properly staffed. Uh um safety around schools and park, keeping dispensaries from popping up around them. Implementing programs that hold the landlord accountable, which has had success in many cities in LA. Controlling speeding in our neighborhoods by advocating for lower speed limits, speed bumps. Temporary flashing signs to protect everyone. Um of course, public, number two, public health and environmental awareness with climate change. Um we could educate about Assembly Bill thirty-eight and Cal Fire's low-cost ways to protect your homes. Um and I would like to collaborate with the county and other organizations. For programs and education around harmful chemicals and household products, hazardous waste, more collection sites and aid. Mental health services. And I didn't get to get to the local character and neighborhood, local businesses, but thank you.
Remember, you're gonna get a minute too at the end. So the next question, now that now that I know that you all saw these questions ahead of time. Is a beefy one that uh, you know, it'll take something to answer it in one minute, but we're gonna ask you to do that. And the question is, uh the citizens, first of all, I think I'll say who's gonna answer it first so they're ready. And uh Doctor Thomas, you'll be answering it first. And the question is, the Citizens Redistricting Commission. Is at work redrawing congressional boundaries in light of new census data? If our twenty-seventh congressional district is revised. Should Altadena go with communities on the west like Burbank? Or with communities on the east like Arcadia? What would be the basis of your recommendation? Sandra?
Okay, um let me say this. I have seen. Um redistricting, I've been here forty-five years, so I've seen redistricting a few times. And I've seen it work where on um. Some things were on the east and some things were on the west. And and for somebody, I I would never try to make uh that call. Because we were fortunate in that when we had Adam Schiff, he took kind of he. He really took care of Altadena and did e- everything right as far as I was concerned. Uh and and he made sure that the proper funding got into Altadena so that we could take care of. The things that needed to be taken care of. Well, uh then um Congresswoman Judy Chu followed him. And Ju- and Congresswoman Chu has done the same thing. Now, totally different areas, totally different people, totally different things. But it depends on what we need at the time. And oh, I wish I could ta- take a little bit of time, but. That big red sign is looking at me.
I'm not, I'm glad I'm not holding them up. Um Michael Davidson, what do you think about this?
Um first of all, I don't have much choice. I don't know if we have a choice to go east or west, but this is a very personal thing. Um Adam Schiff is a friend of mine. I, if we have a chance to work with uh Adam Schiff. He's eloquent, he cares, he's genuine. Um I think he's the best member of Congress in Congress. Actually, and I would be thrilled to have him as my congressperson, not only personally, obviously. But I think he has a special affinity for this community that is absolutely genuine. And I can't say that about every member of Congress, so thank you.
Okay, great. Reggie, how do you feel about it?
Well, I was just thinking about, you know, where are the community foothills? And going east makes sense. Because we seem we seem to be missing like the Zusa, Monrovia, the two tents and to the mountains, it's the finest. But on the other hand, we have JPL there, La Cracinta, right? And so do we get pulled because of the technology bind? Or do we get pulled because of geography? And I think it'd be fine either way. I'm not thinking about the Machiavellian, you know, the percentage of Republicans if we do this or that. But I think maybe we have more in common with the going east because of fires and the foothills. And to two ten, the corridor, foothill community, I guess I don't see Burbank and that kind of stuff as being us. So that's how I was thinking about it, it's more geography. And you know, the San Anas will come this way, the fires will come this way, so we have to be working together, sort of thinking about sort of geographical. Uh answer. Thanks.
Alright, thank you very much. And uh Madeline?
Well, that's kind of a loaded question, like choosing one side of town over the other. But the first thing that comes to mind for me are school districts. Um I know that I was very challenged uh with the school districts, uh well, just the choice of schools when my son was school age. And now I see that my um grandson is having the same challenges. Um I know that Arcadia ha- has the, is the top one percent best school district. In uh LA, California, and United States. It's also the top one percent best with teachers in LA, California, and United States. And it's also top one percent uh best school district. Um so for me, I just kind of lean that way because I think it would be great for our Altadena kids to have. The um opportunity for um, you know, it's just a really great school district. And uh to be a part of that and just to give our kids an opportunity for more growth. Thank you.
Yeah. Pat Sutherland?
It's a really tough question and I wish I had more knowledge on the um on the subject. Um on the one hand, um if we're looking, as Reggie said, um from a geographical sense. Then I would say automatically go east, young man. Um just because of the type of community and the same challenges that we would have up against the, up against the fires. Um as you also said, Reggie. Um if we're looking at people, um and the people who are here now. We've got two, what, who I think are extremely talented people, one being Adam Schiff, one being Judy Chu. And um I don't, I don't think I would say, I I could even could say, oh, I want one versus the other. I think those are two. But that's not how we should be looking at um redistricting. So if we're just looking at the other part, then I would be thinking more of looking from a geographical point of view. Go east.
Thank you. Dot?
Uh again, I I also am sort of torn. So my my center, without doing more research and then understanding the different issues of open space and connectivity. I feel like we need to go the way that Pasadena goes. So I know at regional government, uh Pasadena wants to sort of side with Burbank and Glendale. Um and we could really look at how um we can improve our transit connections there. Meanwhile, Altadena has two watersheds. We feed east and west. So it's really, our diversity could be our strength there. But then my my feeling is how we kind of align with Pasadena, because we have so much connections and how we can strengthen with that. So.
Alright, thank you. And Veronica?
I'm gonna go along with Dorothy and just kind of elaborate on what she was saying. Altadena and Pasadena are very close. And at some points, they actually, Altadena and Pasadena live uh right near each other. So close that they're neighbors. So it would make sense that Altadena would go with Pasadena. But the one thing is, we wanna um study this and be in um um. Be educated about what's happening, because we could lose representation. So we wanna make sure that we keep our representation in Congress and that the redistricting doesn't dilute it. That's the main thing.
Thank you, Veronica. Bill?
Yes, I mean, I'm I'm like many people here, I I'd asked a question rhetorically. Do we have a choice? Are we just recommending to somebody that we would like to join them? I'm not sure how how the redistricting would work. Uh a big fan myself of Adam Schiff, but also I'm a big fan of term limits. Um is there a chance that we could succeed and succeed and have our own representation? Uh is that on the cards? But uh other than that, I think we have to see how it plays out. Uh as other people voiced, I think Pasadena is our strongest ally at this point. And if we have a choice, I would I would move towards uh going with Pasadena.
Alright, and Michelle?
Hi, I feel that Altadena should go with the communities to the east like Arcadia. Altadena is in the San Gabriel Valley like Pasadena and Arcadia, and they must stay together in the same congressional district. Altadena, like Pasadena, has wonderful diversity with needs and concerns. That align more closely with those of our neighbors to the east. The Altadena and Pasadena neighborhoods are closely connected. And we need to ensure that the representation for Altadena is strengthened by keeping them together. Along with Arcadia and communities to the east that also share the same ethnic and social diversity.
Alright, thank you very much. And uh and finally, Elizabeth?
Yeah, uh you know, I don't take a a strong position on this and it's been really interesting hearing everyone's thoughts. Um but I I think I do lean moving west. I think in totality, I think we have more in common with communities like Burbank and Glendale. I don't exactly know how the redistricting will completely uh sort itself out. But currently, our our congressional district extends all the way into San Bernardino County and and no dig on San Bernardino County. But I I think it's challenging to be a representative, trying to represent two counties and and not broad of a uh of a community. So I do think there's an advantage to to being in a district that is exclusively LA County. So um that's my, those are my thoughts.
Alright, thank you very much. Now, I'm a little hesitant here, you know, as moderator, they tell me I get to make some decisions. Um the decision was that we would stop the questioning at eight o'clock and it's about that. But I'm personally feeling badly that we didn't get any questions uh from your constituents. So I'm gonna take the liberty to ask one of the questions from your constituents. And I'll ask that you take a minute or less if uh if if you could. Uh and the question is, how do you intend to help enforce the new state law? Regarding highly polluting gas-powered leaf blowers? And the person that I would like to answer that is Michael. Davidson?
Yeah, in under a minute.
Yes.
I'd like to broaden actually the question about landscapes. We spent thirty-six billion dollars as a country to manage our lawns. We buy seventeen million gallons of fuel to service our lawns. And we pour tens of millions of pounds of fertilizer on our lawns. So there's a lot of noise pollution, but this is an area, I think, that begs a wider discussion. And one of these planetary boundaries is ocean acidification, and all these fertilizers are running into our oceans. And killing our coral, killing our fish, and raising temperatures. So this is not a small issue. Noise is part of it. But I wanna broaden the discussion much more widely.
Alright, thank you. How about you, Reggie?
So, I mean, it is a tough one, so of course we can enforce it, but I like for people to have choices. And so if a guy can't afford an electric leaf blower, the kind I have, we have to make sure they have the incentives, they know where they can get one. That'll work well, the battery won't die, there's recycling for the batteries. Give them choices and just don't take their livelihood away. But I, they're so polluting and they're noisy and they drive me crazy, right? But if it's someone's livelihood, we have to think broader, you know, how do we make this so we're not gonna have another homeless person? Who was a darn good gardener because we took away his leaf blower, right? So we have to have alternatives and that's be clear, and there's gotta be support from the county to make sure they have alternatives. And then get people to leave the leaves alone. I don't blow my leaves away, you know, leave them alone.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. How about you, Madeline? You care to answer that?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. Um I I attended the air quality event at the Altadena Library um recently. And I have to say, I was I was really um encouraged by it. I think the biggest thing is to educate. Although we all know, I think that there's still a lot of education that could be put out there to uh. Just let people know the the why it's just so terrible. Um and I think really we have to have some type of incentive program um to help people. Uh maybe make the transition gradually. Um maybe turning in your leaf blower for another leaf blower. Or um just some type of incentive program so that, um just as Reggie was saying, that people aren't. Just cut off from their livelihood just all of a sudden. I think maybe it needs to be gradual.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh Pat?
This kind of goes back to um what I had mentioned in the, you know, one of the previous questions. Um as Reggie said, we we cannot enforce anything. So what we would need to be doing here would be to provide information. And um I would hope that the county has got some information for us. Um on possible, you know, what possibilities, what things are available, and then it's a matter of us getting out the in the. Back to communication, which is another issue. Um it's up to us to communicate with our residents as to what is available.
Great, okay, thank you. How about you, Dot?
Uh I'd like to see Altadena, uh as resilient as we are, uh come up with some strategies, community-based strategies. community-based strategies, uh, that can focus on, uh, a lot of things, uh, transitioning, uh, green jobs. Again, with the California mandate in a couple of years, uh, we won't have gas powered leaf blowers. So now is the time to create jobs, green jobs, fire resilient landscapes, home hardening. So there's grants out there, so community creativity for solutions to advocate. And then challenge the county, challenge our schools, uh, to transition away. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Uh, Veronica.
Yeah, I think I agree with everything that's been said and education is, um, key to educate. Um, those that are using them to the harm that they're doing. Incentives, because, um, they can't just get rid of their livelihood. So I think that we need to work with the gardeners and the people that use those, including the county, because the county uses them too, at, uh, at their parks and stuff. So we need to work with them, um, on coming up with a solution that's workable for everybody. So no one ends up without a job.
Okay, thank you. How about you, Bill?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this is something I hate, I hate, I hate, listening to those things all week long. Uh, what Michael Davidson said is, is true. I mean, they're bigger problems, but I think it's our job to small, solve the little ones right now and get into the bigger conversations as we go. If Los Angeles as a county passes the leaf blower law, we have to find a way to both enforce it, either through neighborhoods or through the sheriff's department. But at the same time, maybe have an incentive program within Altadena to help these people purchase the right, you know, right machine, the electric ones, and let them continue their jobs up here. We all want nice neighborhoods and nice lawns. And we don't want the gardeners to leave us, uh, in the lurch here. So, uh, while again, I want to tackle small problems and solve them. And as we're doing that, look at the bigger problems and see what we can do about that.
Okay, thanks, Bill. How about you, Michelle?
Hi, well, I've actually already had my gardener stop using his. And I think a lot of people are the same way, um, and it'll just start organically. And I'm not sure that we can enforce it, but I agree with the incentive program, um, to help the gardeners understand. And Pasadena just went through this issue on Monday night. I think that it's coming and the more that people understand and want it, then, um, it'll gradually phase out. Also, um, I think everyone is had enough of it. The noise and the gas smell and everything after being home all the time during COVID with every gardeners all over, um, different days, all days. Um, so I think that it'll just start organically. And, um, we won't waste precious sheriff resources to, you know, ticket people. Maybe they can give them some information.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Elizabeth.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a lot more to add. Um, I echo what people have said. I, I do think, uh, I'm supportive. I do think, um, making sure, um, there are incentive programs or reimbursement programs or trade-in programs for those, um, who are using the gas, uh, powered leaf blowers is important, you know, and I also echo, you know, the need for this to be, go further and, you know, to, to educate and to, um, there are some incentives for drought tolerant, um, landscaping and, and to really, uh, further those initiatives as well.
Thanks. Thank you. And Dr. Thomas.
Well, I'll say this, there, we've had numerous, numerous meetings in Altadena regarding this issue. Um, and, and with great turnout from the community, angry because they were tired of the noise. So, uh, the county is well aware of that, that we're having this problem, but I think everybody has the same problem. Um, and, and it was kind of decided, I don't know how far it went, but it was kind of decided that the incentive program would be the best way. Um, if we would help the gardeners, just as everybody has said, so I won't be redundant. But we just need to help in some way, give them the incentive, uh, to change out, uh, this equipment and get something that's quieter that the communities will be able to tolerate. People don't want to be miserable in their own homes and, and not able to breathe. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you very, very much. Uh, I think it was an important question and I appreciate all of your responses to it. Uh, and so now we have come to that moment that you've all been waiting for. Uh, and I'm sorry, I can't serve you all a nice glass of Pinot Noir or something. But unfortunately I can't. Um, but, uh, it's time now for your one minute closing statement, um, to your, uh, to all the constituents that are listening in. So we're going to start with Veronica Jones.
Oh, I get to be first on the end. Okay. I, I, um, just find it an honor to be able to serve and I try to do my best. And I think I've, um, proven that I, I, um, put my whole self into it. And I, um, really believe in this community and I know the potential. I know what it is now, what it could be. And, and even though it's great now, there's still room for improvement. So I'd like to be part of that. So, um, even though I'm uncontested, I still need my census tract to go out and vote. The county pays attention to numbers, so we do need to show that we are engaged. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dorothy Wong.
Uh, thank you. So, so short and sweet. I would be honored and feel a sense of privilege to represent and serve Altadena Census Track forty six oh three oh one for the twenty twenty-three term. I'm ready, able, motivated to serve, support, work with our diverse and dynamic census tracts surrounded by the National Forest, Pasadena, the Río Seco, Millard Canyon, Wild Rose, Chiquita canyons and our adjacent neighbors in Altadena. I would love to work with my partner Hannah Petrie, uh, to do all we can. And with your vote as your representative, I will commit to work with you and to improve the quality of life for this special place we know and love, Altadena. Together, we are stronger, centered by love, surrounded by compassion, collaboration and communication. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Pat Sutherland.
Okay, um, it's a lot of work being a council member. But, um, I, and I would like to continue that work, but I'd like to continue, uh, also because, uh, there's a lot to be enjoyed about being a council member. Being of service sounds kind of corny, but I enjoy being of service and that's an opportunity that I have. Working with fellow council members, we've had some really big arguments in the past. And we've also been, um, fairly civil when we got through with those arguments. Um, I've made a number of, um, oral presentations to, um, groups in the community, either talking about the town council, or my very favorite one was a presentation to some Cub Scouts that was about, um, the, uh, community, different kinds of communities and how Altadena would be different from Pasadena as far as government is concerned. Uh, they were so adorable, so we listened so well. And it, the meeting ended up into learning how to read a map because I will, I will always have a map with me when I make a presentation of Altadena. And, um, you learned how to use a map without, uh, paying attention to that little voice on the, on the car dashboard.
Thank you very much. Madeline Barber.
Thank you. Um, make this really short and sweet. Um, I would be honored to continue serving, um, the Altadena Town Council for Census Track four six one one. I humbly request your, uh, vote. Uh, my commitment to the community is not only obvious in the amount of time I've lived here, but just pride for being part of this town. I, I think in the past nineteen, twenty months, we've, we've learned our challenges with COVID and we've had to relearn the importance of family and our safety, mental health, and definitely our towns, neighborhoods. Uh, I believe I have the interpersonal skills, the integrity, uh, the compassion and the applied professional skills to be an asset to the team that makes up the Altadena Town Council. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, Richie Wilkins.
Being an ATC council person is pure American civic duty. Not only do we not get any money from lobbyists, we actually pay every month and I can't. We get poorer every month, you know? But I've answered this civic duty a couple of times, not prepared to do it again if my constituents think that I still have some value to add. Uh, as with our country at large, we have deep divisions here in beautiful Altadena. Social, economic and philosophical. While I won't promise you that I can, uh, close those gaps, I will work with you to build bridges whenever I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Davidson.
I would like Dot to repeat what she said. That's what I want to say. I thought that was great. Beyond that, real quickly, um, I thought a lot about governments. How do we decide if a government is good for a constituency, a country, a regime, a city? And I think one of the most important metrics is, does the government truly represent? Does it offer representation to its citizens? And I think that's a holy thing. I think it's a, it's a hallowed, serious obligation and responsibility to say, I will represent a constituency. And my census tract is, you know, a couple of hundred houses, doesn't matter. It's an awesome responsibility for constituents to say, this is what I would like to see happen. I am a member of this community, go work for me. That's how I see my role. That's what I would be honored to do for my neighborhood.
Thank you. Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Well, let me say, it's been, it's been a, a pure joy being a council person for a length of time. Well, probably over twenty years or so, but I, uh, when we come to the council meetings, we do come representing our own census tracts. That's a fact. But when we sit around that table and we start to communicate, we are there as a team and that team, entire team works for the community. So we are there to protect and do all that we can to provide for our community. So it's been a joy. Uh, I look forward to, uh, serving again. Uh, I'm the only person running in my census tract. And so, um, and I'll do my best to serve my, uh, constituents and to work with the rest of the team.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth O'Connor.
Oh, uh, I just want to thank the legal women voters and neighborhood building a better Altadena for, again, for, for putting this together. It's, it's for me, it's been a great experience. I also want to compliment my fellow candidates. I really enjoyed listening to all of you and I've learned so much. Um, I'm really impressed, just so impressed by everyone's passion and commitment. And I'd be honored to serve with any of you on the town council. And to those of you attending or watching later, uh, thank you for your time and engagement. Please consider voting, uh, for Elizabeth O'Connor for Census Track forty six, forty six thirteen. It'd be my privilege, uh, to support, to support you on the council. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Michelle Stiltskoken.
Hi, I believe I'm the right person to represent area forty six thirteen because I will be an engaged, available and diligent council member. I will listen and address your concerns and work tirelessly to resolve your problems and issues. I believe my diverse experience and expertise will make me a better council member. I will bring my enthusiasm and creative ideas to work for a better Altadena. Thank you so much for considering me as your candidate. I humbly ask for your vote. Michelle Stiltskoken, Census Track forty six thirteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Bill Stewart.
Uh, thank you. Um, listen, it's been a joy to listen to everybody and very educational. I think this has been terrific, uh, moment for me, quite frankly. Um, I think there are big issues that need to be tackled by all of us, for our country, for our neighborhood, for all of that. But I'm coming forward and, and seeking, seeking the candidacy to small, to solve the smaller ones right now. The things I think I can change, issues like leaf blowers, which drive me crazy. Uh, the trails need to be open for our constituents. And you know what, uh, Mr. Davidson brought up and some of the others? The, the traffic and controlling the traffic around here, which is getting worse and worse. These are things I think I can help solve, having my business background here to get things done and talk about the bigger issues as we go forward. Uh, thank you for considering me as a candidate.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank, uh, all of the panelists for an extraordinary evening. Um, I'm sure your constituents, uh, have listened intently. And, um, I, I thank them very much for participating and listening intently. Uh, we hope that the league has helped better and, uh, the constituents to be better informed about the choices in this election. But now we turn things over to those of you who have been, uh, for those of you who have been involved, uh, such as those, uh, who are listening in on the YouTube as well as the, um, uh, Zoom. Please participate in our democracy by casting your vote and urge your friends and family to do the same. If your question was not asked due to a time limitation, send it to the candidate. Remember you have an opportunity to vote on November the second and the sixth. Information is on the screen where you will be able to vote, uh, and the times and dates. The recording of this forum will be available on the League of Women Voter Pasadena Area YouTube channel. Visit our website. Also, we, uh, we encourage you again to participate. Remember, the world is run by people who show up. Please show up and get your friends and family to show up and vote too. Thank you to all and have a good evening.